It's Monday, January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and I'm calling this B County Commissioner's Court Regular Term Meeting to Order. We are located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioner's courtroom number one-ten, one oh five West Corpus Christi Street, Beadle, Texas, seven-eight-one-oh-two. That's the call to order. Would everybody please stand and join Commissioner Farias in leading us in a prayer? And then also Commissioner Farias will lead us after that in the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge.
All right, we talk, amen. Dear my Father, we thank you so much for all of this. We ask a special blessing over this new year and this new court. And we ask you to watch over all that we do, all the paperwork, open our eyes, our ears and our hearts to listen to all the people that we represent. And we please ask a special blessing for all the people that are facing this COVID and keep it safe and watch over. As your name is great.
Amen.
We mean pledge, like the allegiance to the flag, the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with every being and every thought. On our Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance to the peace, the protection, and one faith, under God, one and indivisible.
Good morning, everybody. I know we have some visitors in the courtroom today. Thank you all for being here.
At this time, we give you the opportunity, if you want to stand up and identify yourself, you can, but you're under no obligation. And if you're here for a particular agenda item, you'll have that opportunity to do so in a moment. But in any event, welcome. For agenda item number five, Commissioner's Court opening remarks, I'm going to start. I know this is going to be a little out of the ordinary. It's all designed to trip up our brand-new commissioner. So, okay, so I'll start and then we'll, then I'll proceed with Commissioner Haggard and we'll work this way. So Commissioner Lenny, you get to go last. Now, next, next time, we'll also, next agenda, we will, this is part of my opening remarks. Next agenda, we'll also start with you, Commissioner Haggard, and we'll go this way. Thereafter, it'll alternate between Commissioner Haggard going first and you going first, Commissioner Lenny. And what we do, as you know, during the agenda item number five is just let the, let the Commissioners' Court and the public know kind of what's been going on. Sort of a general ninety-second, sixty to ninety-second update of what's been going on over the course of the last couple of weeks. So the next agenda, next Commissioners' Court meeting, we will be identifying our goals on Commissioner, by Commissioner basis. But for now, we'll just do a general update. It's been a little bit, a lot of things have happened. My update is going to be relatively brief. We will have a brief discussion, COVID-related discussion on agenda item number fourteen. I don't believe there's any other agenda items that are COVID-related on the agenda today. But fourteen is a good one and a positive one, and so I'm really looking forward to getting to that item. Otherwise, make no mistake, COVID is, it is spreading rapidly in the county, in the state, in the nation. Continue to do the things that, that will keep you, your loved ones and your family members safe. Be smart, be respectful of others' wishes and concerns. And otherwise, with respect to the business of the county, there've been a few challenges that we're still working on as far as the elevator. You'll hear about them a little bit. But I got to give it to our county employees and staff over, over the holidays that kept us going. We've been very fortunate over the last eight weeks that we really haven't hit too many difficult COVID issues for the county. So my kudos to all of our employees, department heads and elected officials for getting us through the holiday season. And welcome to two thousand and twenty-one. Commissioner Haggard, gear up, sir.
Okay, just had a few things. One, scheduled a meeting and then met with J. M. Lozano and our BAP CEO, Randy Sykes. I met with him on up-and-coming projects, companies wanting to move into B County. I met with him for probably an hour in his office. After he left, after Randy left, I sat down and met with J. M. Lozano on some House Representative bills and some Senate bills that are coming up in the next legislative session. Told him our concerns, what we needed from him and his office. Did not get to meet with Mrs. Aferini, but sent a word with J. M. Lozano that if he had a chance to catch up with her, to let her know that how we, how we want these things to go, protecting us as a county. Then at, after that, met with, I met with a Skidmore senior in, in, Skidmore, Titan, ISP senior, who wants to rename a small section of the street there in Skidmore. I gave her a full list of items that she needed to do instead of me, which she happily took on and was working on that diligently. So we'll be seeing that in the next meeting or so, should be able to see that. I do have a BAP meeting today at noon. We've been meeting for our monthly meeting, having discussions and everything. Looking to schedule a meeting with, again, bringing the trade school back into B County, try and work on something to do that. So I'll be meeting with some people in Corpus on that. And also, I'll be contacting Mr. Jim Allerton about the wind farm replacement that has been sent to us for review. I'll get with the judge and we'll sit down and formulate something to the judge, Jim Allerton. So other than that, the normal business, we are mowing in that end of the county. Ray is doing a fine job of cleaning up ditches and picking up brush. Our brush pile's getting huge in Skidmore. I don't know what it looks like in all manner or manner, but I know it's pretty big there in Skidmore. Two goes to the people that are cleaning up, at least they're cleaning up the yards and moving stuff around. Other than that, it's been usual business. Thank you, Commissioner.
The past few weeks, I've had one called and road bridge to care, it was on Dif Smith Road. My road's crumbling over there and Ray took care of that. I've had a couple of phone meetings with Ernie Picard on the jail issues and his email. So that's moving, not as fast as I'd like it to, but it's moving. We have a few items that's coming up at the BDA, but I'll wait till the next meeting to, to share that with y'all. And we got some exciting news coming along over there. So with that, I want to turn it over to Commissioner.
Thank you. Couple of things. The collection station at Mineral was coming along real fine, everything was going good. And in government, you get surprises sometimes. Turns out the Presley District has listed that we sold it a couple of years ago. So we're in the process of getting that squared away. TCQ sent Ray a letter that said, you don't own it. Yeah, we've owned it since the forties. No, you sold it a couple of years ago. So our county attorney is working on that to make sure that somehow somebody bought some land and it was attached to it. We don't know how it happened, but he's working on it now. And we do own it, but according to TCQ, we don't. So until we can prove to them we do, we can't get our permit to operate. That's one thing. The other thing, I also was in touch with Representative Lozano's office, they reached out to me. They have introduced a bill that we asked them to introduce to put proper identification at the interest of wind farms. This all started about a year ago when one of the wind turbines caught on fire near a town and nobody knew who to contact. They didn't know who to call, they didn't know who it belonged to or anything else. So they're working on some legislation now to introduce, to require identification on the roads going down to the wind farms, much like we do with the oil and gas industry, where you're going to the, the D-WHIT lease number one, so many acres or whatever. So that's in the works. And I appreciate them working on it. And I think it's important to our first responders to know who these folks are. If that fire had been in a pasture or a field that had a lot of material that would burn, it could have been catastrophic. But it wasn't. It was in a field that had been plowed. So all the fire that hit the ground didn't do any damage, except make a lot of smoke and little environmental stuff, but it's in the works. I'll pass it to my colleague on the right.
Thank you. But this time, it's been pretty quiet. I haven't had any complaints or concerns brought to me, but I'm sure that will soon change. That's really about it.
Good. You'll have a lot. Don't worry.
Time to sit down, yes.
You'll have to.
Editing will be different.
And I can, I will commend all of our commissioners today for the self-editing that they did to shorten. So there'll be some days when you'll have half an hour of material and you'll be trying to condense it into sixty to ninety seconds. And it's a real challenge. And then we'll give you about a minute more.
Thank you. Is, is there anything, any public comment? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Identify yourself for the recording.
All right. Mike Willow, this is manager COVID operation. The reason I'm talking now is because normally we used to have a COVID section as variant and it's not there. So I like to take this time to, so, so the commissioner won't be able to yell at me as we go off. First, I don't know if you've watched the news. There's a new strain of COVID that is in Oasis County that's called the UK variant. It is more infectious than the original COVID. That being said, you know, everybody thought the silver bullet was the vaccine. We don't know yet if the vaccine will cover the new strain. But unfortunately, I have to say, we just need to continue our original plan from the beginning. Continue wearing a mask, continue washing hands, continue keeping our distance. Even more so in our working place. Commissioners, if, if you would know how many staff members have been out due to the COVID. And sometimes two or three people in the department. And it's because we're not wearing masks like we should. You know, for county's sake and for the, to continue working for the public. We need to ensure that of all people, we should be the ones setting the example as county employee. Bad note. Now, on the good note, the livestock show and I met upstairs and we surprised each other with information that neither one of us knew. You know, but we worked out an excellent plan that increases the cleanliness of the Colosseum, disinfecting, increasing the safety for the people that are showing animals and stuff. I had no idea animals transfer, transfers of disease. So dogs, cats, you know, but anyway. So we have specific plans worked out. The livestock group has, even if they violate the rules, have access to fines towards them. So that's how serious they're taking it. And they've, so they've come back quite a bit their scale, they've come back to dances, they've come back, a couple of other large-scale agendas. So I think we have a very good work with the plan and I think it'd be a safe environment. That's all I have for the COVID update.
Thank you, Mr. Willow. Is there anybody else that'd like to make a public comment this morning? Anybody? I recognize our former county judge, he snuck in at some point in time. Hello. How are you doing? No other public comments going on? Showing why there's so many people in here I know I'd love to hear from. Okay, moving on, the following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioners' Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a commissioner or county judge. Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Oh, no, I don't have anything. And this is my question.
No further discussion. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Moving on, deliberate and consider action on the following items. Agenda item number eight, project expenditure approval for Smith, Secman, Reed invoice number fifteen dated November twenty-twenty for the Sheriff's Office meeting.
Motion to approve, presenting.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number nine, approve relocation of Commissioners' Court House offices for precincts one and three. Gentlemen, I, this is just housekeeping, but just, just to keep it official, I believe, so that we have it in the meeting minutes. I'd entertain a motion to approve the relocation of Commissioner Farias to room number what?
One oh five.
One oh five and the installation of Commissioner Lenny in room number what?
One oh seven.
One oh seven, if anybody would be interested in making that.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. All opposed? Motion passes without exception. They didn't take my suggestion. They wouldn't be pulled this morning. We do have the balcony area. Not redundant. Basement three. Moving on to agenda item number ten, B County Courthouse elevator. Mr. Isagiri, would you please come forward and give us a general update of where we are, what the current status is and where we're headed, if you don't mind? You might have to speak up a little bit with the mask or de-mask.
As you all know, I've been out for the past three weeks and four different parties. I've been keeping in touch with, Gabe has kept in touch with me as far as the elevator. We've got a call this morning, but they're off of the way. Well, hopefully it gets resolved today. We're hoping across my fingers. They've been out already for a while, so probably just different parts, something going on. Hopefully it's a day to do it.
They went through a process of elimination. They picked one part. The guy would go up and down for a good while, he'd leave maybe about three o'clock, the elevator was good. Something about ten o'clock and following morning I'd get a call that the elevator was down. There was something else, then he fixed that part. And then next day, couple of days, same thing about ten o'clock, and it'd go down. He has told me it's just a process of elimination with that elevator being as old as it is. It's described as a, it's an older elevator because it's closed. The doors open one side instead of the newer ones, they open in the middle. So they had to look up, get some proper chromatic board. They're just going through process of elimination. So that's what we're standing right now.
Question, does our contract cover parks or do we have to pay for the parks?
No, the parks are always separate. Contract is just the maintenance. They come, they do, they do things every morning. So anytime a park is going to be separated, separated, yeah. I also want to give two goes to Gabe. Thought we'd go and say Gabe.
It's boiling a little more, huh?
But he stepped up, he's done a good job, uh, you know, so, but that's what we're standing right now. So they should be, hopefully they're there right now, working on it. Now we've got an hour or so, I guess, but they come out of Corpus, so this should be here by now. He's working on it today. Hopefully we get this done.
Yeah, thank you, John. Thank you. Are there any questions? Can Commissioner say?
Good job.
Yeah, hopefully today is the day and it's always hard to get anything accomplished during the holidays, so thanks for staying on it. Okay, moving on, agenda item number eleven, independent contractor agreement between B County and Linda Bridge for the tax office. Ms. Mattis, this is your agenda item. Would you like to lead off?
Hi, Ms. Mattis, B County Practice Officer Director. This is just the independent contract for me to be able to use Miss Bridge for any independent training that I need. I have contacted our contractor with Net Data, but it's the funding that it would cost to get them to come down and do training because that is a separate cost in our actual contract with Miss Bridge. It's a lot easier, she's right down the road, there's no stage, there's no additional pay. So I have spoke with the auditor and we are working on a line item that we do have and the funding will be coming out of my office.
With these, with respect to the Net Data training, is there a certification that we're, that we're missing out on utilizing Windows?
No, there is no certification. The only reason we're utilizing this bridge is because the funding that it would cost them to come down here is not inside our actual contract, it's paid separately. And it's anywhere between five hundred to a thousand a day for them to come in.
Five hundred and a thousand a day as opposed to Mrs. Bridge?
It's twenty-five dollars an hour.
How long does the training space be trained, if you're going to train one clerk on Net Data?
Well, the training, they can do, the, the training that I'm talking about is for our, our transfers, our.
So specific subset of the Net Data program?
Yes, it's not, it's not anything that Net Data would actually train us on because it's between our office and the appraisal when they do changes. Um, updating on how we would insert them into our line and into the constituent account. So Net Data really doesn't train us on that specifically. They can just tell us where to put certain numbers in, in the product. But with Miss Bridge, she's able to show me what and why I'm actually doing those transactions and what it means and how to help with the appraisal district and their description of the changes up and making to the account.
Commissioners, questions?
Is there any webinars available that they can?
There's no webinars that Net Data can give us. We've, we've contacted them several times and they have no questions and answers to give us. So what does this mean for the appraisal? And the appraisal says, well, this is all I have to put. So trying to get the in-between, Miss Bridge is working there with them twelve years. She understands what they're asking for, where Net Data has no clue because they deal with, you know, twenty, twenty-five different counties and each one of them is different, so they have to understand what they're asking for pretty often.
Is the motion approved pending review and approval of county attorney? Yeah.
I'll take a minute, I have a question.
I say we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, please proceed.
Is there a cap that we put on hours?
No, that would be something we would discuss right now. And then if, you know, pending, you know, the motion.
That's, that's my question.
How much is in that account?
Um, we're still working on that.
My recommendation is to use professional service for this contract. I just don't feel like pulling, pulling dollars from her, from her salary line, as she suggested is the way to go. This contract, yes, I would like to see a cap on it, you know, as far as how much we want.
We changed our motion that we put a cap of one thousand dollars on it and we use professional services to fund it. And if it looks like we need more, you can come back to the.
Okay, we have an amended motion. Who is the second?
I'll, I'll amend that second. And my question is, does tax have any information on this? And I'm not against Miss Bridge, I just, have we gone to tax also?
Um, I have sent several emails. I'm still waiting for some responses. But again, it really is the training in the system between us and the President of the District on the wording, trying to understand what it is they're asking for because I'm, I know Miss Davis has been ill and she has, her girls in her office are doing a bunch of new training. So the, the conversations with both of us, they're unsure and I'm not completely sure what they're asking for. So we're having to go back and forth and, well, can we get this correct? Can we get this correct? Because I can only put in the system what is certified by their office and I have to make sure what they're asking is correct. So I can put it in before I don't know what else.
Okay, sounds great. We have a motion and a second as amended. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception.
Yes, before she leaves, I think she's going to give us an update on the collection.
And yes, and I did want to give you a brief update on our tax payment status. We will be closing our office this Wednesday for a full day of inputting payments and getting our constituent payments put into the system so our entities can also have the funding that they need.
Let's get that on the website today. Sorry, please proceed.
And I think you were telling me too that all the envelopes with checks and stuff are all open in their deposit.
Yes, and, and we have posted everything up to date. There was, I believe, like four or five that were still pending that were just amount corrections that were needed from the individuals. So we are processing, we're caught up as of right now.
Great job. Thank you, Ms. Mattis. Moving on, agenda item number twelve, presentation providing educational information pertaining to CASA, fourth point of special advocates, given by George West High School juniors Burke O'Neill and Raquel Martinez. Commissioner Farias, this is your agenda item. Would you like to provide any introduction?
Judge, Commissioner, I was, I was contacted by Mr. O'Neill and they wanted to come by, it was a school project, I believe, correct? And they wanted to do a short presentation on CASA and I invited them to come in, maybe we can offer our education.
This is great. Can we turn the lights down? While we're getting this working.
I'm trying, sorry, trying.
Mr. O'Neill and Miss Martinez, are you all juniors, seniors, freshmen, sophomores?
We're juniors.
Junior, then is this program in connection with any other high school program or national?
It's actually with SCCLA. What is that? National Organization Family Career Community Leaders of America. And it's a service project sponsored through that organization.
Excellent. So y'all are going around members of B County, those of Live Oak County, and back to all of them?
And next time.
Angela, let's go down. I think it's better. I'll, I'll, if y'all want to start, I'll switch for you. Just let me switch with that.
Good morning. My name is Burke O'Neill.
And I'm Raquel Martinez.
We have come before you today to present our project, CASA, Amplifying the Voices of Children in Need. Next slide. Our project's content and goals. This project is an extracurricular service project which is sponsored through the SCCLA organization that stands for Family, Career and Community Leaders of America. This is a competitive service project, meaning once we complete our project, we will go on to present to a panel of area judges from SCCLA. And based on our performance, we have the possibility to go from the state to then national level. But our first step in this project was to educate ourselves about the CASA program and CPS. We then compiled our research into this presentation to present to governing bodies such as yourself. And our ultimate goal is to get the word out about CASA and educate city councils, commission reports and other civic organizations about CASA. We want to make known that there are differences between CASA and CPS. And we want to unblur the lines, unblur the lines and separate and make it distinct of what CPS does and what CASA does.
Statistics on foster care and child abuse. Here we have several statistics that we found very important and highlight the need for the CASA program. Some of these include more than ninety percent of children with CASA volunteers never re-enter the child welfare system. Sixty-six percent of people in Texas suburbs today were in foster care. And judges assigned CASA gal volunteers to thirty-six percent of abuse and have liked to take this for them. We have found that judges have expressed a great need for more volunteers to face this case.
So what is CASA? CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocate slash Guardian Ed Lido, so the full acronym is CASA Gal. It's a nationwide forty-year-old nonprofit organization and there's seventy-two CASA programs in the state of Texas. CASA has been active in B County, also serving Live Oak and McMullen for a little more than five years. CASA's main role is to be there for the child they are appointed to in a case. Put it simply, one CASA volunteer told us, you are simply there to listen to the child. The CASA hears what the children have to say about their condition and what they're feeling in their current household if they are old enough and able to communicate this. This is why CASA's trademark is, I am for the child.
Training and skills required of a CASA volunteer. Be at least twenty-one years of age, successfully pass screenings and background checks, successfully complete thirty hours of free surface training, plus courtroom observation of two faces, and twelve hours of continuing education every year. Be able to make an approximately twelve to eighteen month commitment to a case with an average of ten to twelve hours per month for in-person visits, but virtual meetings are an option and can stretch the time to five to eight hours per month. Having the ability to keep information confidential is of great importance as well as working with an established program guidelines.
CASA volunteer roles. A CASA volunteer is court-appointed to represent the best interest of an abused or neglected child. But a CASA is not automatically assigned to any court case involving child abuse, neglect, or domestic violence in a child's home. It is the judge's decision after being presented the facts of the case to determine whether or not a CASA volunteer is needed. If a CASA is appointed to a case, it is their job to research, advocate, and then monitor. When researching, the CASA is to uncover all relevant facts pertaining to the child and report them to the court. CASA is unrestricted to any information regarding the children they are appointed to and can speak to the children's teachers, school counselors, doctors, therapists, et cetera. When advocating, the CASA advocates for the best interest of the child in the courtroom and in the child welfare and social services system. When monitoring, the CASA ensures that any court orders are being followed and all services are provided in a timely manner. The CASA brings to the court's attention any new developments within the child's household such as domestic violence, new drug usage, and also any other new changes were concerned.
What is CPS? CPS stands for Child Protective Services, which is a state government agency that is a part of the state's Social Services Department. CPS is funded by the state and many times the federal government. Being a CPS agency means working according to the Texas Family Code of Law.
So what are the differences between CASA and CPS? As mentioned earlier, CASA is a nonprofit organi- organization. Therefore, they receive many fu- many ways of funding at the local level such as individual donations, grants, or the state's department adjusted. CPS, however, is a government agency, therefore it does receive funding from the state and federal government.
Since CASA is a nonprofit organization, the advocates are unpaid volunteers besides roughly three people in each county. They give their time to help children in need without the return of any payment. CPS caseworkers do give a salary of about forty-five thousand, five hundred dollars annually.
When appointed to a case, CASA volunteers, as we stated earlier, are unrestricted to any information involving the children they are appointed to. They have more leeway to operate as they are not controlled by the government and they're able to make a complete and accurate recommendation as to what suits the child's best interest. CPS does have to follow certain departmental policies and Texas Family Code laws. For example, if a child is removed from home, CPS will look for a family member the child can be placed with, such as their grandparents. They'll do an extensive background check into the grandparents' history. If it comes up, a grandma or grandpa did receive a DUI twenty years ago, CPS will not place the child in their custody even if they are great people at a suitable home. This is where CASA is very necessary to advocate and explain the situation in court, that these people are great for the child. They are not justifying the grandparents' mistakes, but simply stating the realization that nobody is perfect and at this time, staying with their grandparents is in the child's best interest.
When CASA is given a case, they meet with the child and get to know them so that they can get a better picture of the situation than the child's view. CASA volunteers take on one case, perhaps two at a time. They have a lighter caseload which allows for them to fully engage with the child at hand. Whereas CPS caseworkers typically have a caseload of fifteen to twenty at a time. The high number of cases results in time constraints leaving the CPS caseworkers less time to get to know the child and hear their wishes. We have heard from multiple sources that CPS is overworked, underpaid, and understaffed. CPS has much turnover during cases, meaning a typical CPS case involves at least three to five caseworkers. This makes communication with attorneys and at some times, communication problems, confusion, and strain. We have been bullied by foster families, but CPS case visits can be very quick and almost robotic because of how many cases each caseworker has to take on and at times CPS gives off the impression of just check the box and move out.
CASA's number one priority and ultimate goal in every case they are appointed to is the best interest of the children. CASA wants to find permanence and security within the child's home, which is why the number of children who are appointed to CASA that return into long-term foster care is only twelve percent. This is why CASA volunteers speak to any caregiver and cover all angles of the child's life. All of the different sources the volunteers speak to allow them to make their absolute best recommendations to the court of what is best for the child. During our researching process, we have discovered that CPS leans more towards family reunification. While CASA would love to reunite all children with their parents, this is just not in the child's best interest in all cases. Family reunification and the best interest of a child are not distinct. Now, in order to cover all angles and perspectives of the system, we had multiple interviews with a variety of sources that include an attorney at Lido, a regional CPS attorney, the assistant county attorney in San Francisco County, an anonymous couple who are foster parents, a CASA volunteer, the CPS supervisor, a district judge, and Kathy Riddeman, who is the volunteer coordinator, and Mina Moore, who is the program manager in the sentence CASA office, who gave us their approval for this presentation.
Becoming a CASA volunteer. CASA is constantly trying to recruit new volunteers. If yourself or anyone you know is interested in becoming a CASA volunteer, call the Beeville office at three six one, five four two, four four zero seven. Thank you for your time.
Thank y'all, very much. Yeah, thank you, Mr. O'Neil, are you, do you have the parents or?
Uh, my dad.
Or is there, Mr. O'Neil, uh, thank you, great job.
True, it'd be great, that's like the next level.
Yeah, that's the level. Y'all are welcome to stay for the rest, y'all are welcome to get up and leave, but, uh, we, we still enjoyed your presentation, whether you choose to stay or go, since you probably have to hurry back to get back to school.
Yes.
So, don't let us hold you up.
We don't want to be the excuse.
I know. If y'all are anything like all of us, you know, you just are itching to get back into the school environment. Uh, agenda, moving on to agenda item number thirteen, Texas Facilities Commission Federal Surplus Property Program Application for Eligibility. Mr. Willow, this is your agenda item, please go forward and let us know what this is.
This is Mike Willow, uh, Ray Van Deen. This is a form for allowing us access to surplus property of the federal government where we can get, um, used equipment, you, and sometimes just overstocked equipment from the federal government at a really, really low price. Um, the form before you is a yearly update and since we have a new commissioner, um, we just decided to do a whole new, uh, form. And so before I could submit this form, I need to have every commissioner's name on there, which, having your name on that form allows you access into the compound. Uh, so besides the commissioners and the judge, I have, um, John, is he getting on there as well as Ray? So, uh, and myself and Ryan on there. Um, dude, I just, you get, uh, sometimes they have water buffalo, there's a few water buffalo that give certain equipment if we ever needed, uh, that's a pretty good program.
If, if you would, when I was with the state of Texas, we utilized this a lot, we went to the surplus property in San Antonio and basically what it is, you're an authorized screener, you go in, you say, I need sixty-two of these, and then twelve of these and whatever, you sign for it and then the bill comes back to the auditor. So, Madam Auditor, be ready in case we go. And, and, and I agree with you a hundred percent, some of this is completely brand-new and it's like pennies on the dollar. It's, it's very good and you did a great job putting this together.
Um, thank you. And we, uh, we've utilized it before, uh, we, we have changed a three-hundred-dollar podium to forty dollars. You know, so i- it's well worth the trip up there to see what they have.
Yes, they, take, take a truck and trailer when you go just in case.
Yes, sir.
But check with the auditor first and be, oh, there's money involved.
Get a livestock trailer, drop down screens or anything like that.
There's, there's plenty, plenty of them.
Yeah.
But no, uh, in fact, we, we request that, and the auditor hadn't answered it, but we request that you do a purchase order prior to going so at least they know, uh, it's coming, something's coming. Cause di- didn't you, um, the metal detectors?
Yes, uh, well, I was able to get the metal detectors that we have in the courthouse. I think we got them out of the Houston office and Robert Ridge went and picked them up. We got them for like fifteen-hundred dollars and there were several tens of thousands of dollars what they cost, that's how we got those. And we bought extra for the parks.
Yes, and, and they're still in?
Good, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Willow, unentertained motion to approve, motion to approve?
Second.
Oh, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number fourteen, approval of wifi for COVID-nineteen trailer, if we're in Europe, we need it. Mr. Willow, this is your, uh, agenda item, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, um, Ms. Cantu asked me to put this on the agenda because we're adding funds onto the budget. Now, we do have funds to cover it this year, but next year, we're gonna have to, like, increase the budget and because we're putting that, uh, burden on the county, she wanted to make sure it was authorized by the commissioner. Motion to approve.
Second, motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Willow, thank you, Ms. Cantu for, uh, for getting this stuff on. Moving on to agenda item number fifteen, new standard mileage rates effective January one, twenty twenty-one, and, Ms. Cantu, have a question.
Um, this is just an annual submission, um, to change our, uh, mileage rates for our travel.
Unentertained motion to approve, permit?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number sixteen, collateral agreement between B County and Spirit of Texas Bank, authorizing the collateral, collateral securities to the new, the Independent Bankers Bank, open parentheses, Safekeeping Bank, close parentheses.
Motion to approve, uh, and I noticed where our finance advisor recommended that we do this. This is out of our pay grade, not pay grade, but I understand that the auditor's, well, it goes long way to put it, our finance advisor's on it.
It's our investment advisor and this is just a different, I'm sorry.
We've got a motion, I have a second, okay, further discussion, Ms. Cantu, apologize for interrupting.
No, it's okay, um, I just, uh, this is just a new bank and they need the judge's signature, um, so there's such an issue.
Okay, um, I have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception, thank you, gentlemen, thank you, Ms. Cantu. Agenda item number seventeen, award request for proposal, RFP number twenty-four slash twenty-one dash zero zero four, pest control services for B County buildings. Madam Monitor, you have the floor once again.
Um, well, this is, uh, this is John's item, um, and we did, uh...
Mr. Yiddager, you have the floor as well with, Ms. Cantu, is it necessary?
Yes, I am the supervisor. As, uh, we were talking earlier, uh, I'd like to kinda, I'd like to table this right now until I get a chance to, to see, um, the bid that came in. Um, I'm kinda looked at the prices, but I haven't looked at, at the company itself, I'd like to do a little bit more research. Uh, again, I've been out all this time, so today is my first day coming back in, so I wanted to kinda, if y'all would allow it, just table it just right and look into it a little bit further.
Commissioner, do it.
Yeah, before we say that, I reviewed these, some concerns and I, I appreciate you gonna look at them again. The concerns I have, we've got a bid here from a fellow in Richmond.
Yes, sir.
Now, that's not just down the road, that's, that's the way.
Yes, sir.
The, the big problem I have with the bid, and I said it's from Richmond, when he goes on the type of chemical, he said, see below for details, that's not gonna get it. I, I can't go along with that, as we know, some chemicals are, are extremely toxic, people are reactive. He just said he uses buggo for pest control. I, I don't agree with the way he puts this together.
Okay.
I personally do not like this bid.
Okay.
Uh, looking at some of the other bids, we've got a local bidder, D and G, for a little fifty-one eighty-nine. They're locals, they, I think they've been doing this job.
Yes, sir, they.
Uh, when you go back and review these, just kinda keep those in mind, because I, somebody from Richmond driving over here and doing the, the work and they're, they're not listening to the chemicals they're using, uh, several members of this court, uh, have been certified pesticide applicators and, and we know that, uh, some of these chemicals are extremely toxic.
Yes, sir.
So I, I appreciate what you wanted to do, take a...
Yes, sir, that's why I wanna take some time and look over it and, uh, and see what they offer, what kind of pesticides they use, so, you have the tables?
Yeah, so, um...
Second.
You have a motion in a second, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, motion in a second, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Cantu. We do not have any, uh, I imagine we need to go before the executive session, so... We, we don't want our youngest commissioner to stumble right out of the game. That's, that's, we're all gonna be staring at him for ten, I guess. At this time, I, uh...
I was letting the face explain there, right?
I know, I, I thought, I would too. Hello, Walker. Agenda item number eighteen, adjournment, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye, aye.
We are adjourned, thank you all for being here this morning.
We, we can adjourn when he's not here, we don't want...
Well, congratulations.